With, um, you know, some type of reprogram. But there's certainly enough space in the building to do that.
Madam Chair, if I could, I just have a couple of questions. So, Counselor, you may have mentioned this, but, um, what is the, the distance between the rear of the existing building and the building that would be on Webster Street?
Uh, so Webster's meant the abut, the abutter to the rear, Mr. DeBau?
Correct, yeah.
I, I believe they have a standard setback of thirty feet. And again, that, that abutter to the rear, I'm not sure what's specific about it. I know there are two abutters that we dealt with. The major concern they had was, uh, one, the materials and the fencing that we proposed. And we'll work closely with them to ensure whatever fencing, you know, suits them is something that we were happy to do. Uh, second was the, uh, the reconstruction of the retaining wall at the developer's expense. And that is something we've also committed to. Uh, in addition to potentially some landscaping, if they're amenable to that as well. Um, those, those were the concerns the director abutters behind us. Um, the existing building now, uh, is, you know, is already in existing condition. So I believe there's about a three-foot setback from our building to their property line. But our proposed building is about sixty feet from the property line.
Okay. Are there any plans for interior renovations to the existing building?
We, we intend to do a full, a full rehab of the building, yes.
So, I mean, one, I'll commend the applicant for wanting to keep the building. That's something we're just not seeing a lot of in East Boston, um, you know, historical significance. But, uh, maybe some consideration for the purposes of light and air, that there's a reconfiguration where it faces Cottage Street, where there is the existing garden, to add some space. So, um, with the space behind it and the space to the side, I think it should just be a focus on allowing for natural light and, and air.
We, we can certainly incorporate that, Mr. DeBau. That's, um, you know, that, again, the focus was to at least mark the preservation of that building and not necessarily disturb what's there and to try to work around that with a, with a workable project that we felt could fit with the character of Marginal Street while preserving the two families.
Thank you.
Is there, I have a question, um, Madam Chair. Is there a precedent where there is a separate residential structure built behind another proposed structure on a same lot near the area?
We have seen those over the years. Um, and we've been very careful about approving them because two buildings on the same lot generally decrease, uh, privacy and other issues for a whole number of, of residents when that happens. So we've been, uh, very careful about that over the years.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is that there is no optics of actual historic property being on this lot. It, it feels very massive and in terms of the proposal.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I can respond.
Hold on, Counselor. Uh, can I, can I? Can I just have a moment, please? I know that Mr. Fortune has to leave in a few minutes. Um, um, and I do want to make sure Kevin and Mr. Fortune is the only one at ten-ten Mass Ave. Um, so Kevin, I might need you, um, to help us, um, uh, be secretary and put the information in the record because this, this project is, uh, obviously raised a lot of interesting issues and comments. Okay? Just want to put that out there. Go ahead.
Madam, Madam Chair, yeah. Actually, a question for Mr. Robinson. Um, since I'm just seeing the drawings for the first time and this rendering that's up on the screen now, um, and looking at Google Maps, uh, it, I mean, it's a, it's a very contemporary kind of flat look in a neighborhood that doesn't appear to share those concerns. Does it look, how does it look to you for context?
And Hansi, you might be able to look at that because I don't know if you had a chance to do a street view or, um, or.
Either, either one, either Derek or Hansi.
Or Ed, since you live in the neighborhood.
Yeah. I mean, th- there seems to be a mix on that street, you know? But, I mean, obviously, um, I think going in any direction, we would want some sign of, some, some type of design review to make sure it fits in with the, with the context of the neighborhood.
I, I agree, I mean.
I think the board has approved some ultra-modern, um, and the ultra-modern buildings on the other side of Marginal Street. If you go down Marginal Street, you enter the shipyard. Beyond the shipyard, I believe, there's some ultra-modern. These seem to be a mix, typically some older homes and, and some with some historical, uh, context and, and character.
Madam Chair, if I may, just briefly, um, there were two comments or two, uh, issues raised by Ms. Barazza. I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly. First was the, um, uh, the precedent for this. Typically, I think the issue to board, at least in my experience here, has been when somebody is proposing a structure behind an existing structure as opposed to existing structure being on the rear of the lot and somebody proposing something in, in the, in the front. So there is a little distinction, I think, in this particular case. Secondly, um, the issue with a concern relative to sort of, you know, shielding or hiding this, um, uh, this, this particular building that's already on the lot was raised during the community process. And we did, and again, I, I apologize, but you might be able to see from Google View, at the corner of Cottage and Marginal is the, I believe it's called the Champa Garden. It's a community garden. It is a de-restricted parcel that can't be built on and provides a pretty significant view of the entire building. So the building remains visible, um, and, and will likely remain visible uh, as long as that restricted parcel remains in effect. And I don't, I don't see the city lifting that restriction anytime soon. So the community garden will, will likely remain and provide a, provide a, you know, ample view of the structure. And we think, again, you know, the opportunity here to provide a restoration of this building, you know, is a win-win for the neighborhood as a whole.
But, you know, I just need to make sure that I have it on the record. This is not, um, historic building in, uh, the legal designated sense of historic building.
It, it is a national registry and it is inventory of the Boston Landmarks Commission. So it does have significance. And certainly through an Article eighty-five process, we would likely go through a, a determination of significance on this building.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, is anybody here?
Madam Chair, you, you mentioned the context. I just would like to comment that there is a very nice rhythm of two-bay. And so I would recommend that BPDA review takes a look at the context to break just the massing at the front to complement the street.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
I believe we do have letters of support that have been submitted, Madam Chair.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in opposition. At this moment, this proposal didn't receive enough support from the community. Uh, the abutters still have many concerns regarding density, number of units, having two buildings in one lot, the, the design that doesn't fit the neighborhood, and lack of parking and congestion. Also, we received a vote on opposition from the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the office. The Counselor, Lydia Edwards. The Counselor would also like to go on the record in opposition.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Excuse me. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Fuller, Comptess Happy George's office. Would like to go on record in opposition to this project. Thank you.
And may I hear a question from Rachel?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Rachel Blumert, one-eighty-four Webster Street. Here representing Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association. Our organization voted against this project with a vote of fourteen in favor and twenty-four opposed. Resident, the reasons residents gave for opposing were adding six units without providing off-street parking, will increase competition for parking in the area. Um, only access to the building at the rear of the property is via public alley. Two thousand and one, this presents a number of concerns regarding snow removal and deliveries. And setback proposed from the new building, um, the public alley is three feet, six inches at ground level and eighteen feet, um, eighteen inches above ten feet. A uniform setback of three foot, six inches will preserve the views of the back building from the street and allow better, for better access to the historic building at the rear of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a question?
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have letters of support and letters of opposition.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, Madam Chair, I just, um, this is Samantha from City Council Michael Flaherty's office. We just wanted to echo the comments of the district counselor and go on record in opposition to the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just briefly, very briefly, if I may.
Uh, first, yes, go ahead.
The, the comments we hear, you know, and I, I understand the sentiment of the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services and, and the various counselors opposing this. Um, I, I want to just point out for the board, again, this is a, this is unlike a lot of proposals I bring before, before this board. There was the better part of two years working on this and to listen and try to respond to specific comments and concerns. I do understand that there is one abutter who is just not satisfied with the amount of distance between our building. We're happy to continue working with them. But we think we've done yeoman's work in trying to get direct abutter support for this and for issues that, you know, that otherwise would not be addressed for them, including things like the retaining wall, the restoration of the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are not, we're not disputing the fact that you did do, um, you know, a lot of work to get to this point. But, you know, us as, who are board members, who, you heard our concerns, you know? Um, and so it sounds like it was, um, an echo of the concerns that were raised in the community. So, you know, thank you for the work you've done. In the meantime, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to pick a motion to deny.
Is there, so, all those in favor?
Aye. If I could ask, is that with, without prejudice?
No, let's try denial.
Okay.
Uh, it, um, sorry, is, uh, any, 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 anybody opposed? Or everybody with the motion?
Madam Chair, I oppose. Legislators oppose this.
Yeah, I, I oppose as well.
And push.
I would give them the opportunity to, to come back with, with something else.
You can't come back with something else. We just don't want to see this with a denial. Okay? Um, uh, so, uh, motion carries for denial, okay?
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-zero-two-nine-two-two-one-eight-thirty-seven Saratoga Street. This is a change of argument from a three-family dwelling to a multifamily dwelling, eight units, erected rear addition and fourth addition, fourth-story addition, and proposed six parking spaces. The violation, Article ten, section one, our street parking shall not be located less than five feet from the side lot line. Article twenty-seven, T-dash-five, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section eight, the multifamily dwelling use is forbidden. Article fifty-three, section fifty-two, roof structure restriction. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, our street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, additional lot areas insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article fifty-three, section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-three, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-three, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn, two-forty-five Thunder Street, East Boston, on behalf of petitioner Nelson Di Olivera. Uh, with me is Trilla Larray up in Joy Street Design. She is the architect for the project. Madam Chair, we're back before the board after a deferral at the last meeting. Um, I know that the secretary read this into the record. As a proposed eight-unit, uh, this is now a proposed six-unit and the most up-to-date plans should be before the board. Uh, we base that, um, and we've made that change based upon, um, the board's action for the building immediately adjacent to this site, uh, in which the, the board approved a six-unit building, um, uh, the same time this was last before the board.
So Counselor, Counselor, does that change your violations in any way?
Um, you, you, I believe the board has the correct violations before it and I can explain a little bit about the program and how we, we've arrived at where we're at. Uh, so this is a five-thousand-square-foot lot located at three-F, two-thousand, two-street. It does say change from a three-family to, uh, six units. There's actually, in a review of the building jacket, there is a fourth unit, uh, located on this site that is, that is lawful, uh, but it has a different, a separate address of eight-thirty-seven A. Um, that unit is located to the rear portion of this building. Uh, and because this property is now, uh, covered under the FEMA flood zone, uh, our proposal would be first to take that unit and get it out of the flood zone uh, and above the, uh, proposed garage that we're showing in our, in our plans. Uh, this will also result in the reprogram of the entire building, which, uh, obviously leads to upgrades to the life safety. Uh, we are proposing convertible addition. This would be consistent height with the, uh, recently approved building to our left, uh, which is, again, a six-unit building with six parking spaces. Um, based upon that, uh, we have a mix of one, two, and three.
Hold on, hold on, Counselor. Uh, Collette, can you please, uh, scroll to the, um, to the rendering, please? Uh, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I think that's, and rendering should be going next. Here we go. So, uh, with recent, you can see here in the back portion, uh, of the building where we're elevating that, uh, unit from the lower ground level, uh, which would be clearly in the flood zone, up to, um, uh, above grid. Um, so that's one of the changes that we've, we've proposed. Uh, we do have a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. The, uh, two-bedroom, uh, average is about nine-hundred-and-twenty square feet. The one-bedroom average is about six-hundred-and-fifteen square feet and the three-bedroom is about a thousand-and-thirty square feet. Um, our use being proposed is multifamily. And again, this is a pre-existing, uh, non-conforming use based upon our review of the jacket, uh, and therefore would be extending that non-conforming use, uh, by proposing to change it to a six-unit dwelling. Uh, the minimum lot area for the district is two-thousand square feet. We're well above that at five-thousand square feet, uh, and would, would comply with the code in that respect. Our proposed FAR, uh, would be slightly above the one-point-oh that's allowed at one-point-four. Uh, the height of our building would be increased to forty-six feet, two inches. I would point out, there is an existing headhouse in the building already. I know that that's not necessarily, uh, determinative of what the height of the building is, but I just wanted to point that out for reference. Uh, and the change would result in an addition, uh, that is set back from Saratoga Street to preserve the existing facade of the building. Uh, our open space, uh, requirement would be three-hundred square feet total for the proposed new units. I'm sorry.
Counsel, can you just jump to the chase?
Sure.
Tell us exactly where these six u, these, these additional units are going. And tell us again if there's a roof deck and tell us if there's any basement living space.
Sure. There's no basement living space, uh, being proposed. In fact, as I said, we're, we're elevating, uh, one of the existing units now. What we're seeing here is the existing conditions plan. Uh, on our lower-level plan, we show no livable space in the basement currently. But we do show livable space to the rear of the building, which is, uh, a little bit great of Saratoga Street and obviously in the flood zone. Uh, our first, second, and third floor existing conditions have relatively, uh, large-sized units. Uh, we would essentially be reprogramming those, uh, to change. And I believe we have the proposed floor plans on the next slide. Uh, while we're going to that, we do not propose a roof deck above, uh, the fourth level. So the only roof deck that we are proposing would be access from that addition, uh, at the fourth level. So those would be above the third level of the existing building. Uh, as you can see here, we do propose where the, uh, where the, uh, we call the non-compliant unit for flood purposes. Uh, we are proposing a total of three parking spaces and those would be full-size spaces and a garage. We do propose to have, uh, three compact spaces on the left side of the property. And again, you can see here, we are not proposing any living space in the lower basement level. Uh, the first full level of living space is, uh, where you see unit one and then the rear portion is unit two. Um, and as we move up the building, um, you can see units three and four, um, at, starting at the, at the, um, the second floor.
Okay, Counsel, Counsel, hold on a second.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans look good.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the applicant addressed many of the concerns of the abutters, reduced the number of units and increased the parking ratio one-to-one. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the office of City Counsel, Lydia Edwards. The Counselor would also like to go on the record in support.
Thank you. Is Karen going to be speaking? Uh, anybody else? Let's go.
Madam Chair, I don't see any raised hands.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have letters of support as well.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You too.
On the next case, calling BOA one-zero-six-zero-one-one-nine-thirty Mayfield Street. This is a change of art from a single-family home to three-executive suites, extends living space into the basement. The violation, Article sixty-five, section eight. Executive suites use is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. My name is Edward Roche, architect, one-five-eight Walnut Street, Dotchessa. I'll begin with, thank you for your service. Um, I just want to, this is a, uh, property that was derelict for over twenty years, uh, that had been a, uh, had been a, just a complete derelict property, caused all kinds of problems in the neighborhood. The owner of the property, uh, was, stepped in and purchased the property and rather than to tear it down, as had been suggested by a number of people, his policy has always been, as he's been a developer of many projects in his own, in his own neighborhood, he actually lives two blocks away from this property, would be to preserve the existing housing stock and not to create another tear-down. It effectively, um, has a, uh, proposed occupancy of, uh, of three dwelling units. Uh, and is, um, has had, there's letters of support from an original presentation in the neighborhood.
Sorry. Can you, um, can you tell us, is the applicant still going ahead with executive suites? Or is the applicant going ahead with dwelling units?
Well, our understanding from, with the ruling from the law department is that there's been no decisions from the city, uh, the law department as to how we should proceed on this. And they suggested that this is to be presented as is, um, for, uh, basically, uh, executive suites, but it's, it's three units of, of housing.
No, but that's, that's an important distinction to us because I think our goal would be to see that there's long-term tendency in these units as the first, as first case. Can, um, can everybody make sure that they are, um, yes, thank you. Um, long-term tendency in these units is the first thing. And the second thing is there are always issues with us with, um, dwelling, uh, dwelling space, specifically bedrooms and things like that in the basement. Um, so I don't know if, um, you know, you've had a chance to speak with the owner of this building and if he's going to be coming, uh, he or she is going to be coming ahead as executive suites or as regular units. Go ahead, Ed. Uh, can you unmute Edward Roche, please?
Hello, my name is Joseph Baker. I, I just got, uh, unmuted. My, um, I'm the, I'm the owner of the property and, um, m- my, my intention is to go forward with executive suites. Um, when, when I bought the property, like Mr. Roche said, I, I had, um, so many different developers trying to buy it from me and realtors and, and that. They wanted to try and tear it down and, and do what everybody does and just do a bunch of, you know, uh, uh, townhouses in a row and, you know, with this much space, a seventy-two-hundred-square-foot lot. Uh, but I didn't want to do that. I, I wanted to preserve the beautiful old Victorian, uh, shingle home. And that's what I did, with every intention of, of using it for executive suites because that, that, that's the only way that, uh, that I could m- maintain this property properly. And, um, and that was, that was my goal. So I took two full years to, uh, to, to restore the place. I mean, when I tell you meticulously, restore every door, every piece of woodwork, every floor, you know, for this reason. And, uh, and then the, the, the executive suite thing, like the Airbnb thing, kind of hit a wall and City Council didn't want it anymore. And the reason they didn't want it at the time was because they said that there was no affordable units and there was, there was no empty apartments. And they didn't want to take any more off the, off the, off the rolls at, at the time.
So, so.
And my, and my argument was, you know, that's not forever. And now we're looking at three-hundred empty apartments in, in my neighborhood alone. They're all empty.
Yes, so, so Counselor, you know, given, given that fact, I mean, um, Mr. Baker, given that fact, um, can you, so, so you're, just because I want to make the absolutely clear. So, one, you're proposing to go ahead with these as executive suites. And two, I think, um, you know, you might have heard me say a little bit earlier that, um, we have, I'm not been supportive of, of residents in the basement. Um, and so we just need clarification. Maybe it's low-hanging, maybe we should, and so if you could respond. So you've responded that you want to go ahead with executive suites. And the second piece is, um, are you still proposing res- resident space in the basement?
To be perfectly honest with you, if, if that was the only thing that was going to hold up my, I, I need to keep this place moving. I need to, I need to keep doing what I'm doing. So if the basement was a deal killer, I guess I could take it off, off the, uh, off the plan. But I, 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 I can't keep this property in, in any other way.
Because it sounds to me that, you know, because the use, and I'm looking at the violations, because the use is forbidden, you know, you have kind of two strikes, uh, both on the forbidden use and the residency in the basement. You know, um, because it might behoove you to kind of take a step back and look at it in a different way that, that will get you to where you need to get to.
Yeah, well, uh, uh, to be, to be clear, the, the basement space is part of the first-floor unit. It's not a whole separate unit by itself. I mean, if, if I could reconfigure that for just living, not, not bedrooms and just living space, obviously it will, it'll comply to all the safety regulations and it'll be the right height and I'll have the right egresses and, and light and air and everything else. But if you're telling me that that's, that's the hang-up on this and I, and I, there's a possibility that I could still do my executive suites and just have a, a tiny little unit on the first floor and use the basement as a basement, then that's what I would do at this point.
So, so, so you're pretty, so if I'm reading you correctly, Mr. Baker, you're clearly saying that executive suites is your priority, um, and, and, and not how you want to go.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, you will not center these as full-time units?
Well, I, 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 I really, no, I don't want to. I mean, I don't want to, but I mean, I would be willing to back off the, the basement use if, if, if I could get my executive suites. I, I'm just being perfectly honest with you. I, I, I'd like to be able to run this property the way I know it will work and the way it will work best for my neighbors, for myself, and for me to be able to like, for instance, I can block out weeks at a time if I have to repaint the place, if I have to do landscaping. If, you can't do, can't do that in any way.
Okay, so let's, okay, so, okay, so we have clarity that you want to go ahead with executive suites.
Yes.
So we will ask you the question we ask of everybody who is proposing executive suites, uh, just so that we are continuing to do our due diligence. What is the expected timeframe that you expect people to stay is one question. Second question is, um, do you expect this to be occupied? How, what percentage of the year do you expect it to be occupied? And who's, how is this going to be managed? So that, you know, if we, and because in some cases, for example, a place in JP that went, um, you know, uh, you know, illegal executive suites had some, um, some significant drama there. And so, uh, so can you just kind of walk us through and tell us what the checks and balances are for this, um, late-night parties, whatever it is? So talk us through it.
Yes, okay. So first of all, the people that have problems doing Airbnb, a people that honestly, it's, it's only the dollars and cents. That's all they care about. The operators that just leave everything wide open and they accept every single reservation, they're going to have problems. Okay, so the first big one is you, you don't rent for one night, okay? If you rent for one night, you get young people that are going in there strictly to have a party. All right? The second one is, you, if someone is local, if they're from Boston or even Massachusetts, what I do is I put down, do not auto-book my place. You have to tell me why you want to stay in Boston if you live in Boston. Now, I've had people. Now, I've had people say, I live in the South End, my bathroom's being done over, I need a place to stay for, for a week, and then I verify that, and then I let them in. I'm hands-on completely. This place was Airbnb the whole time before the regulations hit, and my neighbors love it. They said they've met people from all over the world and, and everything. I have letters of support from all of my abutters, except for one guy that I can't find because he's an absentee landlord.
And so, tell me, tell me, so you're, so you're saying to me that you manage it in, you're, you're a hands-on manager?
My son, yes, yes, yes. And also, also my daughter did one, two floors down from where, where we lived back a couple of years ago before the regulations, and literally, literally, I would, we would be there every day. My kids clean the place. We take care of it. It's, I've never had issue.
You know, Mr. Baker, our issue tends to be that the relief that we grant goes with the property and not with the owner. So, so that's why we're always cautious in, in the approach that we take, you know, so just to put that on the record.
Yes.
So let me ask, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans look good, except for obviously it's the living space in the basement or the bedrooms in the basement.
Okay, then, let's see, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, excuse me, in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Patrick Vandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. While executive suites fall outside of the administration's outlined housing guidelines, this has been through a full community process, including in a butters' meeting that was held last fall, a presentation to the Columbia Savinale Civic Association and Planning Committee, and further, the applicant has worked and conducted extensive outreach to all of his direct abutters, and I think beyond the scope of the required flying, flyer and notification guidelines outside of the official community process. This application received significant support from direct abutters, and there is a petition on file with the zoning board of over a dozen direct abutters. He's taken step over the past several years to update the previously neglected building and has maintained it to bring it to its current state, and he has been in contact throughout this to address any issues that may arise with his tenants. Based on the support from direct abutters, we'd like to go on record in support of this proposal and just ask that the applicant continue to work with his neighbors throughout the rest of this process.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Samantha Bennett, on behalf of City Councilor Michael Flaherty's office. We echo the comments of the mayor's office and would like to note that the direct abutters are in support of the proposal, and thus would like to go on record and offer our support. Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley would like to go on record in support, City Councilor East South Bay George would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay. Okay, so it's time for a motion. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to support the project as submitted, except for removal of the lower-level bedroom units. I will second that motion.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
I am, I am opposed. I think that this is, this may be a wonderful person and a wonderful neighbor, but if we don't have a consistent city policy, I don't understand what we're doing, so I am strongly opposed.
Edward, you opposed too?
Yes, I was.
I too am opposed, so motion doesn't carry, it's been denied.
Calling the last case of the day. Calling BOA 101-2008, 190 Rare, Washington Street. This is erected new single-family, two-and-a-half-foot-story detached dwelling, and proposed two off-street parking, violation of Article 10, Section 1, limitation of off-street parking area. Article 51, Section 9, main entrance. Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking and looting. Article 51, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the front yacht is insufficient. And Article 51, the rear yacht is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself on this one as well.
So for the record, Costas is excusing himself. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we will just put our heads together just to see how things are going for, how things went today after this case. So may I have the applicant put his name and address on the record? Is somebody here representing Peter Offman?
Yeah, I'm checking, I don't see anything in the chat or a hand with here. I don't have anything on my end, Madam Chair.
Okay, so it is now 4:02. This was scheduled for 1 o'clock. May I have a motion?
I can motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is now adjourned, except for board members to stay on for, for five minutes.